Lakeville Planning Board, Tora. Thursday, April 11th, 2019 at 7:30. Okay. First on the agenda, I'd like to welcome our new board member.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you very much for offering your services.
You're welcome. Civic duty. Pardon? I appreciate being able to offer the civic duty.
Yes. It's not glamorous, but it is needed. Second on the agenda is to meet with...
Oh, I need to reorganize the board.
Oh, okay. Doesn't say that.
Yeah, it does have to.
What?
It's like a two-part thing.
What's that?
It's on there after.
Okay, so I would like to...
Would you accept the motion, Brian, to continue as chairman of the board?
Second back.
Y'all accept the motion in a second, yeah? Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Yep, I guess so. Okay.
We need a...
And we need a vice chairman.
Like Pete, would you be interested in being the vice chairman? Can I make a motion for that?
Zink, are you interested in... Do you want to do it this year? I'd rather Zink do it, but...
I'd love having Zink do it.
All right.
So you're nominating Zink?
Yeah, I am.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Absolutely aye. I don't know how you feel, though. Okay, so next on the agenda... Can I do next on the agenda? Okay. Next on the agenda is to meet with Zenith Consulting Engineers. I think you're here in place of Jamie, correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
Which one is it first? Is it the...
The first one is proposed 40B development on Rhode Island Road.
Sure.
Good evening. For the record, Niles Zega from Zenith Consulting Engineers. So I believe the majority of you have seen this or have probably heard about it, but what we like to do is when we file these... This is going to be a 40B project. It's located off of Rhode Island Road. For people that don't know where that is, it's right off the old hospital property. We're filing a 40B and we're going to be filing with the zoning board of appeals. But in order to do that, what we like to do is we like to inform... We like to inform everybody, like different boards and different commissions, what's going on, so that way there's no surprises coming down the pipeline. It's very much in the preliminary stages at this time. We've submitted to mass housing. We're waiting on an eligibility letter. We're working on an appraisal at this point. So what we have done is we've done some conceptual design and actually we're getting into the definitive design at this point. The plan that you see before you is just conceptual in nature. It does have the ability to move around, but the idea of the project is 12 lot, 12 single-family units. And with the way that works, 25% of that or more, depending on what zoning board approves, will be affordable. 25%, so potentially three or more lots will be affordable, designated as affordable housing. So as you can see, it's basically just a dead-end road with a hammerhead turnaround at the end. 12 lots. We've also... We've actually brought this before the fire department and gotten their approval because this... And I know that's one of the big things on your end. You want to make sure of fire safety and accessibility. There is a hydrant right out at the road, so they have the act that accessible as well. This will be serviced by town water as well as onsite septic systems. We've done perk tests on the site already, so there has been some activity on the site. We've gotten perks done for all the lots that are... I'm sorry. Except for one lot, we've gotten all the lots parked. It was all beautiful soils. And everything else, like I said, everything else on here is just conceptual in nature. And we were just, again, just wanted to bring this before you to show you what was going on. This is just as a... You know, just to show you kind of conceptually what we're looking to do for the homes, what Mr. Turner's looking to do. This would be typically the style of home that would be going in there. So just to kind of give you a rough idea. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Go right ahead. Sure?
Just to be clear, are these going to be owned by the occupant or would they be rented units?
They go... I believe at this time they're going to be owned.
Can you please show us on the map? Maybe we have a map of the larger parcel, but I'd like to have an understanding of the environmental contamination on the parcel and the distance from these properties to that contamination that's being evaluated by the Mass DEP.
I don't have that at this point. That's something that we're going to put when we do the... When we have the entire... When we do the entire project. Again, for now, this was just... And that's all... That's completely separate from this. You know, as far as this lot goes, it's off of this lot.
You should be aware that there are financing limitations for properties that have a distance from an environmentally contaminated site. Particularly FHA will take issue with that. So I think as a community, we do need to have a very good understanding of where that contamination exists relative to these properties, whether or not it's on this particular parcel. It may impact that development.
And that's understood. We absolutely have that all mapped out and that's information that we can absolutely provide. We have no problem providing.
We'd also be interested to find out the progress on the Mass DEP restoration of that parcel. What exactly is happening over there? I think that's relevant. I don't know if anybody else agrees or not, but...
I think that would be relevant, yes.
I mean, I think that's more of a conservation issue than I think a planning board issue, but again, I mean, that's something that...
Well, yes. Derek?
I'm Director Derek Maxey. I am the owner of the main parcels around that. The landfill that exists there, it's about 1,100 yards of material, that this DEP has given three options back in 2006 that state that it can either be removed or replaced with clean soil. It can be capped or it can be standalone. Currently, I'm planning on leaving it as a standalone landfill, so it is still there. The contamination is still there. We've done a lot of water testing and stuff like that. We haven't come up with anything that is... Has any harmful effects in the water, anything like that, but we haven't done any actual digging in the landfill.
Right.
Just as long as you're aware, it can impact the financeability of these properties, which could impact the value.
Do we know that the distance that would be...
Well, not at this time.
...per view? It's adjacent. I'm not saying the distance of the contamination, but the distance that maybe the FHA...
I'd have to double-check that guideline.
Would have that concern.
I'd have to double-check. And they may not be the only lender that takes issue with that.
Understood. Yep, I agree.
Something to look at.
Absolutely. It's a very good point and it's something that we're very much aware of as far as it being there. You know, we have no... It's not that we're trying to hide it at all. We have mapping of the entire parcel. It's something that we can absolutely provide. Well, I'm sure Mr. Maxey wouldn't mind...
He'd ask me to provide it.
Exactly. Absolutely.
Well, generally, this is a preliminary.
Exactly.
It's not to that stage yet. But as a preliminary issue, has anyone thought about a 40R as opposed to a 40B? Because it is relatively close to the train station, so I think the 40R gives the town a little bit more...
And that's something we can look into, but it's something we can get back to you.
Might be something to look at, though, you know?
Absolutely. I mean, we'll discuss with our council.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely. And it's a very good point, you know?
Yes.
It's something that I'm sure Mr. Turner has met with his council on this and this is what the direction I think he recommended to go, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it's... You know, that's not something we can look into.
No, but I think that might...
Counsel didn't recommend him.
What's that?
All 12 units are going to be...
Pardon me?
No, it's only 10%.
The town council doesn't... So only...
I don't mean town council.
Or 40B.
I don't mean town council. I mean our council. That... I apologize if I missed one there. I was...
No, that's fine. That's fine.
That was it.
Either way, it's fine. I'm just saying that I think the 40R gives town a little bit more latitude.
Of course.
And also...
And a lot more money.
Well...
I understand. Absolutely. It's something we'll definitely look into. It's not something that we're going to just turn our backs toward.
No, no.
We'll absolutely look into it.
It might be beneficial to you.
Of course.
Yeah.
May I ask about the drainage field? It says here that we have a drainage area on the backside of the property. Who will own that drainage field? Because we don't want the town to own that.
This will be... This is not going to be a town-owned road. This will all be privately owned.
And who will own the drainage area? Who will be responsible for that? Will it be an HOA that will cover the responsibility?
That's correct. That's absolutely correct, yes. This is a private... This will be privately owned with a homeowners association. So it's a very good question.
Would the HOA documents be available before approval's issued?
I believe so, yes. That's something that typically the ZBA will review and with council.
And what about the leaching field there on that first parcel on the right-hand... On the left-hand side? The conceptual leaching field? Right about that?
This?
Okay, is that what that's pointing to?
Yeah. Yeah, that's an error on the...
Okay.
That lead is pointing over here.
So the leaching fields will be in the front of the properties?
For the most part, yes.
Okay. And if they were... If they needed to be replaced, would there be locations on the lot to have them replaced down the road?
Yes. Again, there's reserve areas. These are all designed conventionally with primary and reserve areas.
That's 40 health issue.
Yeah, I was curious.
Okay.
Are you happy to answer any other questions? If anybody has anything? I mean, I think, you know, again, I'm not... It's not that we're not... Again, we're just in the preliminary stages and I think it was just... It was a good faith effort on our end just to come before you and discuss it and so that way, you know, it doesn't look like we're just turning that, you know, an oasis to you guys. We just want to be upfront about what's going on here so that nobody's questioning anything.
What size lots are they?
That's a good question. I think they're little... Anything over 5... Everything's over 5,000, correct? 5,000, 6,000? 5,000, 6,000, 7,000 or something?
Yeah. But that's...
No, it has to happen. I get it.
Right.
Is that a road... An easement for a road going behind there? It looks about the width of a road.
This is a separate parcel. Our parcel is the area that's shown and patched in with the gray area here. The remainder of the property is all separate from us.
Derek, you ready?
May I address the board?
Sure.
Subcouncil, I'd like to be. Thank you, Plan Board. As you probably know, my name is Derek Maxey and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I apologize that I felt the need to address this application as I'm a friend of Mr. Turner's. However, I wanted to explain that I'm not a proponent for this particular 40B proposal as we as a town have more than adequately permitted well beyond the state requirement for low-income housing. And as you know, we are a very friendly 40B community. I explained several months ago at several town meetings, public forums, when I acquired the household property and met with both of the boards and citizens and gave them my word that I would develop the property with the residents and neighbors in mind. And I want to inform the board that I sold Mr. Turner the property with the understanding that he was going to build a single-family house on each one. This is actually two lots. He was going to do one on each lot as he built a house for my daughter as well. And that was in my purchase and sale agreement was that anything I do there, the planning board has final approval over. So that being said, when I was approved for the ANR by this board, it was a single-family house lot that met all current zoning. Six lots is what we did there. What is the zoning requirement for this piece of property? Per other town meeting, I think it was 2005 town meeting, that approved a mixed-use overlay district specific to this hospital property, the whole 66 acres. And I can provide you guys with map and zoning article. You probably have that. And the zoning article was well thought out and met with great town satisfaction and approval. We all remember Cisco. What happened there? To not follow the will of the people in our project like this would be a shame. I truly believe that the planning board should be the permitting authority as authorized by the Lakeville residents at our annual town meeting. As you're aware, everything that gets down on the Lakeville household property has to be approved by the planning board, not the zoning board of appeals. That's in the actual town meeting and zoning. And as far as the landfill, I explained earlier that it is the way it is. It's probably going to stay that way unless for some reason, you know, I run into a land, you know, a ton of money that I'm going to go in and clean it. So it is going to be an attractive nuisance at this point. As well, as we all know, the household property has and is an attractive nuisance with all the empty buildings and the landfill. That's a concern of mine to try to keep a lot of these people from going out there and climbing through all these buildings. And I do have 24-hour security, but even that's tough to do with the local police. I would also suggest that the developer would put restrictions, not allowing the use of private wells for any reason as per our original agreement unless we ensure that the landfill doesn't affect any private wells that might be put for sprinklers or water or anything like that. I would also ask that they provide adequate proof that the visual line of sight for these dozen or so houses entering Route 79 will be met because it will be difficult there. It's a tough area there when you're coming around that corner. So again, I'm no attorney, but I would assume the developer should disclose most of these issues to anyone that buys this property. Now, because the planning board is currently authorized as the authority for this property under this mixed-use zoning, my guess would be that the 55-plus age restriction that is currently on the property is probably why the applicant is going the 40B route. This is actually, in my personal opinion, allowed through the planning board through the zoning article for mixed-use high-density development. But I believe because of the age restriction, it doesn't make it... It doesn't have the appetite for it. However, if the developer went the route of the planning board, which I would encourage, then they would all be market rate units. The planning board would have some say over how it's done. And then when I come in with the next phase, which is quite a few houses behind that, it'll be all done by the planning board because that's the route I'm going to go. So I guess it would go back to that point where does the planning board or would the planning board remove the age restriction? Which is the only thing that probably is holding this from going the route of the planning board, in my personal opinion. But if... And if they do, it would set a precedent that the town is willing to work on developing the Lakeville household property and Mr. Turner may even be better off at the end as he, again, would have all these market rate units. I believe this would allow the developer to build the same project without violating the bylaw and be more profitable. Eventually, the rare portion of the property will be getting developed and as you know... And you probably know I cannot de-restrict 40B housing on this property. It's just not allowed in the state. So I would prefer to go the planning board route and do what we promised the town we were going to do. Reason being is that the planning board, again, would provide oversight and develop the property as authorized at town meeting, not by way of a state mandate that gives the town no latitude to make a better landfill. After all this... After all, this is what the citizens of Lakeville voted for. I am willing to work with the developer if he needs any additional assistance to make this happen. And I guess my final note would be, you know, would the board consider asking town council's opinion as to whether the zoning can be ignored, mixed-use zoning? Are we required to accept this proposal, knowing that it's zoned differently? Can we change the 55-plus age restriction? Again, does the planning board have jurisdiction and... Excuse me. And the biggest thing is, yeah, I am worried about the kids going up, you know, depending on how many families are out there. This is just a portion of what's going to happen. My envision was the master plan of maybe just tying into a bunch of houses in the back. We deal with the landfill. We deal with the fencing. We deal with the buildings out front. And we try to make it safe. But currently, right now, we all know it's an attractive nuisance out there. And so again, if the planning board could reconsider and look at this as under your jurisdiction, you know, just follow the bylaw as written and it's what the townspeople wanted. So thank you for your time.
Can we have a copy?
Thank you, Derek.
Can we have a copy of that? It was a nice...
Yes.
Thank you.
One region, it looks like.
Well... I got mine.
Is your enough copy?
Yes. I have to take a mine. That's good. No, it's going to be... She'll...
You guys can share.
I just have the other plan. I just don't have the other plan.
It just missed one plan. Somebody has a plan. Anyways...
Yeah, this is the actual conceptual plan right there.
Thank you very much. On this plan that you provided, maybe your engineer can tell us where this property line is that... This property line that's shown on this plan? Here? See that one? Where is that on this parcel?
The wetland is the best point of reference.
Which is this spot right here? Okay.
That this property line here, I believe, is off of our property. It is a lot... An additional piece of property between our lot and that property line. So are you down here somewhere?
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
So the plan that you have is actually was given to me by the town. That is the plan that was voted on and adopted at town meeting several years ago.
Yeah.
That was a stop and shop original proposal.
Okay.
Still like it.
It looks like it.
I would definitely entertain a motion that we...
Pick the town council based on zoning?
Yes, exactly. Precisely. We send this off to town council to have them re... You know, just look at the zoning and advise us on what we are able to do. But what I would like to, you know... I still would like to see if these gentlemen could entertain the 40R because if they're going to get anywhere with the 40R, it would work. But I need town council to tell us what our... What our responsibility is and our restrictions are with the age... The 55-plus age requirement on the property. Because if we're restricted to 55-plus, then so is that. And we can't just waive that.
So, no, we would have to change it at town meeting. But it's a...
It would have to be changed at town meeting, not like we would go up and...
No, no. Of course. The... But it's a thought worth looking into. I mean, this is definitely worth looking into.
Counsel to give us some direction.
May I ask another question for town council? I would also like to know if the applicant shouldn't be required to provide information about the environmental contamination at the neighboring site where they are so proximate to one another and the financing may be inhibited by the location of the...
I don't know if we need to be responsible for the financing.
We don't, but the applicant should be telling when they're... If they're telling us that they're going to put up these homes and they're going to be financed, right?
Yeah.
Then it should be part of the application. Just because it's not on the property doesn't mean it's not proximate. I would imagine that's part of the state's application, but it's there.
For 40B?
For any property, yes, for 40B, 40R.
Derek, yes?
I'd be more than happy to provide the document from the DEP outlining what their conditions are. And all the testing was done. We did a numerous water tests out there. They've even... They've identified the landfill is not a hazardous waste site. They know what's down there. So it's a three-page document, so I can provide forward that.
Okay. And also, can we do a deed restriction on secondary wells, right?
Right.
Terry, just so that the board's aware, there's no intent to you to put any wells here at all. It's all going to be town water.
Oh, okay.
Agreed. However, people will still install them if they know, you know?
Well, I understand. I'm just staying the intent forward.
Sure.
I don't know if we can throw a deed restriction, but we might be able to...
Certainly could defer to town council on it, see what they would recommend.
I mean, really, the board of health is going to have a shot at this and they're the ones that would be the ones to implement a deed restriction on it, to be honest.
Right.
They're too small. You can't put a well there.
I can as long as you don't use it as drinking water. You can.
Which would be the ultimate goal?
No.
The ultimate goal is to not have it as portable?
No. You can put a well in for irrigation.
Correct. But that would be, in theory, fine. The goal would be not to have it as portable water because of the contamination.
Right.
So because of the undersized lot, they're making it right out of the gate, non-conforming drinking supply.
Yes.
So we wouldn't really need a deed restriction because...
I think that would fall under board of health.
Right.
Board of health would mention that.
Yep.
Plus if they had their water tested.
The applicant just informed me he has no problem putting a deed restriction on either way. So if it needs to be done, well, whatever's the right route to go, I believe the board of health would be the authority on that, but we have no problem doing it, so.
Okay.
Is there any other questions from the board?
No, Niles. I think I... We want to thank you for coming in and bringing this to us.
Of course.
Which gives us all these questions so we can get the questions answered by the town council so we can give you a little bit more direction.
And we appreciate that.
Okay.
So you entertain a motion?
Two.
To defer... We need to make a motion to defer to town council? Or are we just going to...
No, I don't think... No, we've already done that, I think. We haven't made a motion?
Okay.
There you go. Make the motion.
Make a motion for the board to defer to town council on the mixed-use zoning currently in place on this property regarding the 55 and over age restriction Make a motion for the board to defer to town council on the mixed-use zone currently in place on this property regarding the 55 and over age restriction to see how that affects the 40B usability that's being applied for.
And also the.
Proximity of the contamination to the property regarding finance.
That Barbara mentioned, yes. Very good, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we need a second? Second?
There you go, all in favor?
Aye.
See, I'm quicker than you guys.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's interesting, because, you know, I wish, in the future, you know, that I could wrestle the property somehow to restrict it. But I don't think you can on a 40B, because that's that state right, you know what I mean? If it's a 40B project.
Right.
Unless it's already zoned that way, you know, I'm not a pressure. But I'm really thinking about what the neighbors are worried about and what they, what I told them I was gonna do and all this.
Yeah.
And that's why I like the idea that the planning board could actually take controls, because there's gonna be more behind this. You know, you're gonna be involved through this whole thing, because I'm not proposing a 40B on the rest of this stuff. It will be the planning board. And, and I think it's a good opportunity to like start this, because you, I don't know if you read the zoning, but the zoning is kinda complex, but very vague.
Yes.
So, no one really, so you have a lot of latitude, I guess. You probably have more latitude than a zoning board appeals on this. And, you know, and whether the applicant goes as a zoning board or planning board, I'm not against the number of houses, I just, I'm just, we told the neighbors what it was gonna be, you know, 55 and older, single-family houses, this and that. And I just kinda, just wanna make sure, I'm not to blame late of that, you know, I did something different that I told them I was gonna do.
It's the most important piece of property this town has left to develop it, it's the gateway into our community, and what we do there is incredibly important. That having been said, affordable housing is a critical issue, we know that. Senior housing, affordable housing, is an absolutely critical issue, it's way more important than anything else.
My name's Madeline Mancy, and I just, I just wanna ask a question. So, if the 40B were approved to go forward with it, with it not being an age restricted, so that they could just, you know, 40B, they can have it for families and whatnot. Would that then mean it would be setting a precedent for the remaining land, the mixed-use property? That it would then not have to be age restricted as well?
I think it would have to go parcel by parcel.
What does that mean, exactly?
Well, if, we're just addressing this one parcel right now?
Correct, but if it comes into play.
I don't think, I don't think.
It's actually a good point.
I'm just wondering how it's gonna impact the remaining property that we're gonna, you know, possibly develop? Is that gonna be also available to us to market the properties to non-age restricted people?
That's a good question, but I do not think planning board decisions set up precedence.
But may I continue further?
Sure.
So, if Mr. Turner was to not go for 40B.
Right.
And he was to just go, like Derek has said, go for planning board approval, and the planning board, and then we were to, to ask you if it could be waived with the age restriction for the entire parcel under mixed use? It would serve Mr. Turner well to not have to go 40B, and it would serve the rest of it for not having go age restriction? Is that what I'm, is that what I'm understanding? Would that be a good way to go?
I, that's a good question for town council.
Okay, 'cause that may be in the best interest for everybody.
Right.
If it's, if we, if the backland has to be age restricted under mixed use, and the front portion on 40B is not age restricted, it seems to be a little conflicted there.
I, I'm beginning to think that to waive the age restriction would take town meeting.
Okay.
So, that would have to go in front of town meeting.
Because the mixed-use overlay which covers all the property which he currently owns in.
Yes.
Because we sold it to him.
Yeah.
That is under the mixed use.
Yes, well, it's, it's under the overlay.
Which is age restricted.
Yes.
Correct, okay, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on. I'm sorry?
It's also under the underlying zoning. It was on before. And, and the underlying zoning is still perfectly, is still perfectly, if not more valid, once you get into this, you, the underlying is better.
I was just a bit confused, so I just wanted to see how it would impact the whole parcel.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think zoning board may have authority over changing the use of the area to the age restriction. May not need town meeting, but I'm not sure.
Yeah.
It's an overlay district.
So, they may have.
I think it's town meeting.
Yeah, so I'm not sure, but that's kind of a.
I think they may weigh in with regard to a town meeting, but I think it's town meeting.
I mean, they, if they can do a 40B, they've got some latitude to do, they're gonna waive it on a 40B.
Are they?
No, no, that's not true.
Well, he's asking. We're sending it to town council to ask their, their opinion.
I feel like we should probably ask the question too. Because that parcel's zoned as a whole.
Yeah.
If we lift the age restriction, we're not lifting it piece by piece, we're lifting it off the entire piece, so that it opens up well.
You'd have to go to town. This is, it is, I'm looking at our zoning bylaw, it definitely would have to, I mean, it's right in here, we'd have, it would be probably for parcel. And it would probably.
That's what I'm saying, it would go to town meeting, but I'm saying if we lift it for this, we're lifting it off the entire parcel, so that all of them become open to 40B.
Right, that's what I was.
That's.
I think the state.
You're not gonna just lift one little tiny block off the.
We're only dealing with one, we're only dealing with one block.
But it falls in the whole zoning overlay.
It is a parcel within the overlay, yes.
Yeah.
But I don't know if, I don't know if we need to, I don't know if we need to vote on the age restriction on the whole overlay for the one parcel that we're dealing with right now.
I'm not saying to vote on it, I'm just saying we should ask town council for our own education.
Yes.
How to handle it, that's, I'm just saying, ask the ramifications on the entire parcel if we do this.
Can you, will you be sending a letter to town council for us? I'm sure you will.
You'll have to.
Would you be able to?
For something like that, you should write it yourself. Your question.
I will.
You're actually allowed to do that. And that's the.
Can I give Kathy a break?
May I ask a question about the height of the buildings? How high are they now? The structures that you'd be putting up? The structures that you would be putting up, the single-family homes, what's the height on those?
Two stories, so it's.
The structure's 30 feet.
Close to 30.
32.
So, I wanna say, thank you very much, Niles.
I get a very strong feeling about that this is, we just started designing a dog by going from the tail first.
Agreed, that's a great way to put it.
That's.
Yeah, it's a good saying, yeah.
That's good, it is a good saying, yeah. Okay, next on the agenda would be, again, Niles, for the A and R submittal for 56 Main Street and 1 Ebbene Farm Road.
Sir.
Good evening. I don't have it for display, but it's a very simple, it's the, it's actually in the construction at this point, it's, it's a commercial site. We're looking to put, we had gotten approval for, it's gonna be a Dollar Tree with a restaurant. And the, there was two separate parcels there, it was 56, no, it's 56 Main Street.
Yeah.
And a portion of it, 1 Ebbene Farm Road. What we're looking to do with this plan is to extinguish the line between the two and have one single property. Because the work is overlapping both properties. So, so that's, the purpose of this plan is to basically extinguish that line and combine two parcels in the one.
Okay, so.
Want to borrow mine?
So, the one building is.
Can I just show you?
Yep.
The one building is the total of the project?
That's correct, just saying. If everybody can see, if you guys.
Yeah, you're just extinguishing a line.
That's absolutely, it's as simple as that. We're actually showing the existing foundations of what's there currently on the plan. This was the existing line here, we had it in dash, that is going to be extinguished, and actually even though it should be extinguished, this is going to be combined, very simple.
Right.
Maybe it's all the zoning requirements, frontage area, apartment area, et cetera, et cetera.
Yep, making two parcels work.
That's correct, two, two conforming parcels in the one conforming parcel.
And the whole parcel will be 56 Main Street, it won't be 1 Ebbene?
Yeah, I believe so, we have to, we honestly have to discuss that with the assessor's office, but I believe that that is correct. I believe it's going, 1 Ebbene Farm Road will be extinguished.
Okay.
That's correct.
So, did the plans we talk about on this parcel change substantially? Because I remember we spent quite a bit of time talking about the driveways and, so that this parcel and the, oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at this upside down. This is, this is, yeah.
His restaurant, I mean, Dollar Tree front.
Dollar Tree, we're talking about Dunkin' Donuts at one time, and the neighbors were here, and then we're talking about, what will this be used for?
It's nothing, correct, it's.
It's gonna be incorporated into the whole parcel, one parcel.
For increased development?
Mm-mm.
No, just.
No, you can't have.
It's mostly ponds.
Where, right now, the design that was approved back last year, I believe, August of last year, the impervious, we actually got a waiver on the impervious area of the lot, including both lots together. So, we, there's not really any room more, any more room for future development.
So, you take, you're only allowed to have one primary facility or building on a lot. So, they provided the two lots, so they could have two buildings. Combining the lots takes away the ability to have another lot, another building on the other lot.
Okay, then that's good.
This is, this is really just a.
Some people.
It's really just a cleanup thing than it is anything else, it's not to, it's just a cleanup thing to make sure that the lot line's not going through the building, essentially. Because that's what would have happened.
Real close.
Correct.
Yeah. I would entertain a motion on that one.
I move we sign the Form A.
In a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See, in the old days.
These ones?
This was, this could have been just been done with a surveyor without performing anything. But nowadays, the registry wants everything signed by the local planning board and that sort of, just so they, they know that there's someone actually in the town that saw it. And it's not a, it's not as traditional A and R.
It's potential, it had potential for, it was called an 81X plan, but the, the problem with that is it's not as clean. This is a much cleaner.
Do you need all these copies?
Uh, no, we just need to sign my lot.
Okay, do you have that?
I believe that we submitted it.
We can do it last, right?
Yeah, you should do that then.
I mean, that's okay, right, if we do it last tonight?
Um, I'll, yeah, I can just get it, yeah, I can get it from you at another point, that's not the problem, I cannot stay late, so.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so, number four on the agenda is to discuss April 1st, letter from Jebbsky and SAC regarding the removal of land from the Mass General Laws, Chapter 61A, and A and R submitted for the same parcel. Is anyone here to speak to this?
I'm here to speak about the, about the A and R plan, Niles Zager from Zenith Consulting Engineers. I do not know, I, I believe the applicant was supposed to be here to discuss the, the Chapter 61A portion, so I'm not really prepared for that, so I apologize. But if there are questions, I'm sure we could, I could try to address as best I can.
Can someone show me?
I.
Where are they talking about?
What?
What is the 61 piece that we're talking about taking out?
Oh, it's a.
It's not this one, is it, it's not this one.
I saw it on the ledger. Parcel B?
Parcel B is currently.
Yes.
Well, I don't think it's parcel B, because those are currently on the mark, or at least they've got real estate signs on them, as if they're gonna.
It's parcel B.
It's parcel B.
It's parcel B.
It is parcel B.
Yes, because we just saw a plan.
Okay.
I believe.
Oh, yeah.
Um, with lots on it.
Okay, what's the, what's the current zoning on that parcel?
Go to, go on, go down two pages from that one, and you'll see the draft for possibly.
Yes.
Five, four, three, two, and one, possibly one.
So, the intention is simply to take them out of 61A to put these four homes on it?
Yes.
Okay, there's no other portion.
We don't know that it's four homes.
Right, that's, well, that is, it's being represented as if it's four residential lots, and there's four residential signs on the property for sale.
Five lots. Yes.
One, two, three.
This guy could throw 10 houses on there. He knows how to do it.
Who?
Paul.
Was that yours too?
No, no, I'm just, I was just saying, using his, using one of his plans, we could get 10 houses in there.
Yeah, I wouldn't be interested in a 40B, yeah.
No, what's the, do we have?
What's the goal tonight for this? I'm just curious, if Crossler didn't show, what do we wanna talk about?
Well, as far, I believe, I mean, I'm not sure if the board feels comfortable signing the A and R plan, but the A and R plan is for the creation. There was one, Lot 1 was created through an A and R plan previously, and now we've got a creation of four more additional parcels.
Can you tell me who owns Lot 1?
Um, I believe it's the same, I believe it's.
Craig and Laurie Crossley?
Yeah, Craig Crossley.
So, if it's coming out of 61A, the town has the right to.
There's no one, yeah.
I'm looking at a different.
No, one is different. One is.
That's the first house on the street. That's not one that I'm.
One has a separate map that we signed two years ago.
Yep.
That's correct.
This is a two-year-old.
Which is one.
Lot 1, all the way over on the right.
It's the furthest down on Crooked Lane from Rhode Island Road, on the right-hand side.
You wanna borrow a drawing again?
That's, that's okay, I know the property very well, that, no, thank you.
That one's been partially cleared.
Pardon?
That one's been partially cleared, that Lot 1, there's gonna be.
So, someone must own it.
Mm-hmm, I don't know their name, but I know what they.
I know, I know as far as the 61A, I know that the applicant had been in front of the selectmen regarding, regarding this. And I believe that they had no intention, the town had no intention of taking it.
Well, I'd like to call you on that.
Yeah, I don't think that that process is finished yet.
I don't know for sure.
It's fairly lengthy, and we have to have.
I do know for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, no.
No, for sure.
Our comments on, on the 61A are due on April 18th. And for the selectmen's meeting on April the 22nd. So, would you want us to do a Form A presuming that they're, what action they would take on April 22nd? I think that's high-handed.
No, no, what?
I, I would.
What, take any, so we don't take any action?
Uh, yes, we do have to take an action, because if we don't take an action, he gets constructive approval. So, we're gonna have to deny. And then you'll have to start the process over again, unless you can think of a third way of withdrawing without prejudice on the spot.
No, I really don't wanna withdraw without prejudice.
Because, no, because you, you get an approval if we don't take an action, so we have to take an action. And the only action, this action, this, I, I was at the.
I remember.
Assessors today, and I couldn't find, I couldn't find who owned it, and I couldn't find who was paying taxes on Lot 1. But somebody was clearing land on it. I also couldn't find who was paying taxes across the street, this is the same developer. Hadn't, the last 60A, he hadn't taken the land out yet. Now, we took it before town meeting, in town meeting, we agreed to do a tax in lieu of, payment in lieu of tax, of tax agreement, and they never executed it. I talked to your, to our assessor, and he says he can't get ahold of the folks at Crossler to be able to execute any of the paperwork on his end, they won't return calls. So, I think the easiest thing for us to do is, is to deny. And I'll write up a thing for Kathy to give to the clerk, because right now it's a live piece of paperwork that's gotta be squashed.
So, we, so here's the question, I apologize for interrupting.
You get the check back, you get the, you get the, you get everything back, and you get to start over.
If we withdraw without prejudice, what would the, what would the implication as far as that go? When, I actually don't know the answer to this.
Well, I, I think, I think right after, right after the town just tells you, or tells us, or announces that they don't want to take the property, that extinguishes the lien, but I'm not town council. Right now, we have a lien against the property. It's a black and white lien.
Yes, sir.
You can't do anything with this property as long as this lien is in effect.
I understand that.
And, so, you're asking us to presume that this is no longer in effect and to do the Form A. But we really shouldn't do that until this is extinguished first, until, until you extinguish the.
The 61A.
The lien, yeah.
So, I would, I would, I'm gonna retract my statement, and I'm gonna ask that we withdraw without prejudice.
Okay.
The application in this submittal.
Okay. That good, Kathy? Good.
Fair enough.
Thank you very much.
I move we accept it.
Thanks for grabbing that.
And I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a great night.
Yep.
Thanks, thanks.
I remember when we did number one, Lot 1, we released it.
Me too.
Yeah, but they, they've never.
Yes, I do, and it was a family land.
Yeah, they've never.
And they wanted it for.
All same family, I believe, out of these next four, isn't it?
It's the Orals.
I don't know.
It's never been taxed yet.
No.
I.
I'm very uncomfortable, given the history of what's happened across the street, if the documents are not signed.
I have more, I have more story I could.
Okay.
What, you're like a tax lawyer?
No, no, this is all stuff I learned today.
Good catch.
He's been doing this a long time, don't let him fool you.
No, it was. What, what actually happened was. what, what actually happened was that part of, one of the subcommittees that I sit in is Master Plan Implementation Committee. And we had a person come to us from Middlebury Gas and Electric. Explaining to us how solar farms work and how they wanted, you know, and I was curious about how much money you made on those things. And I was curious how they taxed it. So I just took it upon myself to go check and try to figure out, you know, what the numbers were behind it. I wasn't, you know, mad at anyone or something. I, I just wanted to be able to report. This is how good this is for the town, because they told us that this was going to be the last one ever. And the people from Middlebury said, oh, no, no, this is a perfectly live idea. There's, there's, you know, that, that was mistaken too.
Especially where they get the, the tax incentives on the report.
Yeah, so I was curious what the numbers were and I couldn't find, and then I just started discovering things.
Did they renew the tax incentives? Because I thought they expired last August, that's why you pushed so hard.
No, they just, no, they were-
No, that was just the one that they were dealing with. That was through, um,
They get reset.
Middlebury Gas and Electric. But they're almost ready to expire.
And then they'll pick up again.
Yeah. Okay, the next on the agenda are three. Uh, zoning, Board of Appeals petitions. Wanted for Keller, Keller here, 350 Bedford Street.
Eight by 10 shed.
Yep.
Wow. And this is how, to help him support his septic system, nice. Must have a pump in there? Yeah. No, no comment from the planning board on this item?
No, I, I have, just between us, there's a, they, the, the water company will usually make you go, if you're tying in with this property, they usually make you cross the front of your, frontage of your property with, with your pipe. But they just, they just took a shortcut, but that's a, it would just be, they, we, we know it, we know the main isn't going to be going any further down Bedford Street.
Oh, I get what you're saying. So they snuck it in at the very corner?
Yeah.
That's fine, right?
Well, if, suppose the next guy wanted to tie in.
He can't.
What?
Well, he'd have to extend it, right?
Yeah, but you, you're, you're supposed to pay for your own, is the, is the, is the conventional way. Everybody pays for their frontage.
Oh, I see.
Of pipe.
So it should, uh,
To make it complete.
To make it, to make it fair for everybody, it should extend up quite a bit.
But-
Is there somebody up beyond him?
Well, Winberg's.
Oh.
It's in the church?
The church. They can't go up Highland. There's, there's not enough, uh, Highland's too steep. The water will only go halfway up the hill.
Where's the proposed shed? I'm sorry, now I'm getting my bearings as to where this is now. Where are they proposing it? It's not out in, right in the front, right?
No, way in the back.
That's why all those, that equipment was there.
There's something being built right now, right down back there, but I didn't, uh, the guys were stupid, so I'm half built one. I don't think it's the same shed though.
Quite a system. Yeah.
Yes.
But it's right next to the, to the drinking water inlet for Tom. That's how careful you have to be when you're that close to the inlet.
The pipes are down to elders.
Right, right.
See, I know how a lot of times in the plans, we have that little thing in the corner that shows us where it is relative. And it shows us like how the parcel fits. Is that, how come it wouldn't be on this plan?
The locus view?
Yes, yep.
The, I mean, this is directly next to, um, Town Hall, you know, City, the City Hall building.
This is the old nursing home.
No, 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 no.
No, no, they're showing only-
Basically, Hall right here.
Landing.
No.
Oh, this is the plaza.
And there's Winberg's out here.
Okay, yeah. Well, this is the plaza.
As a matter of fact-
It makes it look smaller than it is. It's a lot bigger than it looks.
This, this used to be the Wife and I Restaurant.
The what?
The Wife and I Restaurant.
Now it's a bank?
And gas, and gas station.
Really?
Yep. And Allen owned it.
And yes, it was under-
Okay.
It was underwater.
Okay.
It was under-
Yep.
The guy went in the airplane and landed on Assawomset to eat breakfast at the Wife and I. And the plane, the plane went through the pond.
Went through the pond?
Yeah.
Or went through the ice?
Yep.
Yeah.
The guy landed on the ice to eat breakfast at the Wife and I. And when he was in eating, the plane went into Assawomset through the ice. Had to be back in 1980, no.
Yeah, it was in 1980s for sure, or 70s.
Could have been late 70s.
Yeah, late 70s.
You don't remember that now?
You don't have any problem with this? I mean, this is no comment as far as us. I mean, they need the shed to protect their equipment, so I certainly don't have any issues with it. I'm motion of no comment on, uh, 350 Bedford Street.
Second, everyone?
Second, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next on the agenda is Paula Hool, 23 Twin Oaks Road. Temporary carport structure within the driveway limits at setback.
Learned a lot about carports with this email. It's like 40 pages of carports.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I forgot.
It kept going. I was like, oh my god. Actually, I couldn't figure out which one they were going to build because it's, it looks like there's several different carports in here, but it didn't really matter to me, I guess, you know?
Yep.
Like, they have the open ones and then the closed ones.
I didn't realize they needed special permits.
Well, it's above a certain size, right? Um, it's over 200 and something square feet.
And it's within the, um,
I was going to say approachment.
Within the driveway limits at setback, or within the setback at the driveway.
Oh, okay.
So.
So it's where it goes, not what it is. I see.
I'd like to make another motion of no comment.
I'll, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We usually do no comment with a zoning board. Just sheer information.
Figuring that if we did have a comment and if we disagreed with them, it would cause more trouble than, than what possibly useful would be.
Right.
For, uh, if there's something we'd probably agree with anyway.
If there's something that's exorbitant, we usually make comment. So this one here is proposed addition. Will use existing footprint of structural, of structure. Consisting of a family room approximately 18 by 15. Off of kitchen.
Make a motion of no comment as well on this one.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I particularly don't have a problem with it because it's like turned backwards, you know, so.
Okay, number six is a memo from the town administrator regarding scheduling a public, public hearing for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment for medical marijuana dispensaries and adult-use recreational marijuana establishments for annual town meeting.
They also discussed streamlining the process of tuning special permits by putting it under the ZDA. So it's a change in process.
So if I, if I, if I could speak on this a little bit?
Sure.
The zoning board review advisory committee had, had nothing to do with bringing this forward, but we did talk about it for a fair amount of time last night.
Yep.
At our meeting, simply because we knew the letter was here and coming. And it is a zoning change, you know, a bylaw change, so we thought we should talk about it. And there was a lot of back and forth and some, some reasons why. And, uh, overall, it, it, I felt at the end of it, once I heard everybody's, um, everybody's side, I did, I did feel as though, and I, and I do feel that the zoning board of appeals is the proper permitting board to handle these because, um, they handle, you know, uses. And this hand, this is about a building's use. It's to keep it as simple as possible. There was also, the, it's not as cut and dried as that because people did talk about how busy the, the ZDA is.
Yeah.
And these will, um, load them down quite a bit, so that, but that's not really our, our concern. It just, that's just extra info.
So why did it end up on our lap and now they want to take it off?
Originally, they felt as though the planning board was the proper permitting board for this.
Isn't that when they, at town meeting, that's how they kind of set up that whole process?
Correct, yeah.
So it, it is the planning board problem until we changed, we or they changed that.
It has to go to town meeting, town meeting can change it and reassign the perm, the, the, the board to the ZDA, you know?
And that's this proposal.
Correct. Right now, the ZDA sees them for, um, they see them for medical marijuana. And we see them for recreational, which seems, uh, I guess, you know, when you look at it, that every company coming forward is going to carry both. Why are they going to two different boards, you know?
So we don't have site plan review anymore?
Uh, well, the, the site plan review portion would still be, uh,
They're striking it.
Correct.
So that means we won't have site plan review anymore?
For certain buildings that don't get any, that don't get any changes, you know what I mean? If there's changes to a, a lot, you know, if there's drainage, stormwater, I believe it would, it still would get site-
I think, I think there should be site plan review by the planning board for a marijuana dispensary, whether it's a change of use or not. Because I,
So the planning board does?
Well, maybe, maybe I shouldn't care. Maybe I shouldn't care, but what I have been saying right along is I think there should be very close scrutiny on what the traffic flow is.
I agree.
And what, um, the, the lot coverage is, what the parking is. And that's all with site plan review. I think there's going to be a lot more use, there's going to be a lot more flood of, um, of, of people coming into a recreational marijuana facility as opposed to a medical marijuana facility. And that's why I thought the planning board would be instrumental in that, because that's what we do. That's what's in our purview. Where, um, other people, it's not necessarily in their purview.
So the way it was, my understanding of what transpired was that the intention-
With this?
With my, right, my understanding of-
Well, this is the first I've seen this. Everybody else has seen it?
Well, we got it a couple days ago.
A few days ago. I mean, in the email, that's all. That's the first I saw of it too.
You know, that, that the thinking is that I think that there's a, that the ZDA is, would, that they would streamline the process. My feeling is I'm not in a big rush to have retail establishments in town. I think what we've accomplished so far has been fine. It's consistent with the use we already have.
Right.
With the medical growing and so forth. I will tell you, at Serpide, there is some discussion about what's going to be happening with the Cannabis Commission and the possibility for cafes.
Yeah.
Marijuana cafes.
Sweet.
I think retail use and cafes materially change the character of the community. And for that reason, I would not be in favor of putting this in front of ZDA. Having said, I actually hate being involved with this, okay? I wish it wasn't, I wish I wasn't on a board that had to deal with this.
Right.
But that having been said, um, I realize the importance of wanting to streamline the process, but I don't know what the benefit to the community of streamlining the process necessarily is when what we're looking to do at this point would be retail and use facilities.
Well, probably one of the reasons why they're taking it away is, because, so they, so they, the people who are having the meeting with the town council and trying to get it taken away from us is so they can be in more control of it.
Well, I, I don't know. I mean, I think that it has been a challenge, I don't, I can't speak-
I'm not asking whether you know or not.
Right, I'm just saying, I don't know the motivation.
This is what I think, okay? So they're going to take it away from us because they want more control of it and they don't have any control of us. So they're going, so they want to take it away, and I don't care. You know, I really don't care. But, so they're going to try, and this is what happens sometimes, Mark. They want to take this away from us and give it to somebody who they have a lot more control of. And then they can kind of lead it in the direction they want. Because it's all about financial benefit for the town, for-
Can we make a recommendation on this document?
Whatever you want.
Oh, we'll have to.
We will have to.
Like we discussed-
We have to have a hearing.
In, uh,
We have to have a hearing.
Article E, number two is, they take away detailed site plans. Right there, it would be our purview, so I would recommend to the town manager or whoever's going to oversee this meeting, that that stay in our purview.
We oversee the meeting? Brian chairs the meeting.
What?
Of, of the, the hearing for this.
Of this hearings, yeah. Well, usually, but not if it's the way-
But our recommendation is going to go to somebody else that's going to have a bigger meeting, isn't it? Or it's just going to the town meeting. So I did, my point is, so our recommendation when it goes to town meeting is that we don't lose the purview of site plan review.
Right.
Well, I think the, the idea was that if ZDA was, was typically dealing with more controversial issues, that perhaps that would be a more appropriate venue, right? That they would be, you know, it wouldn't cause them.
We, we don't really know if the ZDA has seen this.
Well, you talked, you said last night you all met.
They'll see it at their next meeting.
No, that's CBRAC. Here's, that's not ZDA.
We're just a committee and, and we really didn't even, we really only went through it because it is a zoning bylaw change. So we merely just read it and voiced our opinions for about 45 minutes. And there was a lot of discussion. You, you know, you spoke earlier about speeding it up and slowing it down. That was a very, um, that was, that was the main gist of the whole thing. And why do we want to speed it up or why would we want to slow it down? You know, this, with all the different boards, there's going to be all the different thoughts on the whole process, so. Maximum number of dispensaries, uh, you know, recreational dispensaries, it was, uh, was almost took up the entire time. How many will be coming, you know?
Did they tell you?
I don't see that.
There's five host agreements already signed in the town.
I thought we had three. We had three.
We have five.
Now we have five. All right. Talking about controlling. Now, listen, number five on, under F, okay? It says the adult use marijuana establishment or marijuana retailer marijuana uses may not operate in the... In the special permit will not take effect until the applicant has obtained all final licenses or approval. But they're crossing out the adult use marijuana establishment or retailer.
Right, that was a, see, that was a big, that was the reason why we held, one of the...
I mentioned that.
Was we were waiting for that, but that was, that was black and white in our regulations.
I did bring that up.
And we were asked to overlook that. And I remember replying to somebody that we are not authorized to overlook any rules. And we aren't as a planning board. We're different than other boards.
There's no mystery that those four meetings that we had as far as special permitting or five maybe total were kind of a mess. There's no mystery to that.
Yeah.
We started out with no checklist and then the checklist grew and then we had a finalized checklist. I mean, you know, you don't look horrified. I mean, it...
No, I'm not horrified.
That was our very first, first special permit and, and it's, it's very complicated. You can dive into every single, and we did. We, we had that list of, so...
So they want to streamline that?
Well, they, they're going to keep that entire checklist, I believe. That entire checklist gets passed right over to the ZBA.
Well, it was mirrored from theirs.
Exactly. It's, it's from other towns, it's from, but what, what made it, what made it look like it wasn't as streamlined as possible is exactly what zinc said. They came with incomplete applications, you know what I mean? And we had to, you know, okay, go back and get all this stuff and this. And it makes it seem as though we're picking on them, but in reality...
It was our first one.
Exactly. That was mentioned, too. And, and so it really, you know, it was a good meeting, very productive.
I remember some double talk and some of those were, they were telling you that you were going for a level one and they were really going for a level 11 type of...
Yeah. Or, and the guy didn't know what level he was going for.
And he's the one that's more transparent.
Yeah.
Can I just make one point?
Please.
That was mentioned. Special per, Mark, you would not be able to vote on anything within the industrial park, so that would only leave four members for a special permit. Any applicant's entitled to five. So that's where there might be an issue and you don't have like alternate members at this point.
We won't. We don't.
I know. So the applicant could...
Most towns don't.
You know, he, they're entitled to five.
The ZBA has seven.
So that's, well, there's one problem because there's only five on your board with no alternate members.
Would it be unheard of to have a sit-in member, like the building commissioner can't? Can he?
Yeah, I don't think...
No. We have that form that we just filled out tonight, I believe, with $77 check.
Oh, that's, it's coming.
No, no, that form that we have to fill out with the five names, that's it, period. We're not allowed to change those names.
This year. If we were to change it, it would, it would take a town meeting and add associate members and, you know, and those associate members you would call upon to step in for the, for these meetings, you know?
That's a very valid point. So what, what happens if we didn't, if we didn't move this, was that discussion had? Because if, if Mark can't vote on anything in that development and they're entitled to five, then what do you do then?
He's in a butter to almost every building, correct? That, that, at the...
Well, I think that's, no, not from a...
Direct or...
Direct, a butter, no.
But they don't do direct, they do, they do footage, yeah.
The one we did last week, the one we did last week while you folks weren't here, on Harding Street, we did a whole building for marijuana.
On Harding Street?
I wasn't here?
You were here.
Oh, yeah.
I was trying to look at Mark and Barbara.
Oh, we weren't here.
Yeah.
On Route 44.
On Route 44. Yeah, in the industrial park.
Yeah.
That's right. That, that was...
They did a good job. It was a good, it was a good presentation.
Very good presentation and I don't know if that process, that was just preliminary too, right? I mean, all that...
That was a grow facility, right?
That was site plan review.
That was site plan review.
Is that a grow facility?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, those are slam dunk.
No retail.
No problem with that.
Oh, no. Is it retail?
No retail.
No retail.
No retail.
A nice job with...
Grow and manufacture and the guy had good drawings.
But that's...
And he had a good attitude. And, well, it takes a good attitude, too. I mean, if you're coming in here being sneaky, I mean, it's...
Yeah.
Yeah, he had the answers.
We can see through that. That's all we do here.
Like Brian said, that, like a grow facility really is a slam dunk because it's just a factory. They can be making car parts and they can be making marijuana, you know?
This is a different story.
Recreational dispensary.
Use, cafes and so forth.
Well, what they didn't know, they didn't know that they also had to go for that, so I helped them with some paperwork so they could get started on that, too.
Can you clarify what you said about the five? Is it five votes or five signatures?
For a special permit, you need a two-thirds majority, so that would be four out of five. However, the applicant is entitled to have five members in case one is opposed. So they're entitled to that extra member.
Super majority?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's not for the site plan, that's for a special permit, but because it's kind of a combined process right now.
And that's a statewide, all, all special permits are that way.
Yes.
And we only need three votes for any of our As. No, Bs or Cs. We need a majority for a site plan review. So if we only had four of us here...
Question directed at town council, that if I recuse from the vote, a recusal, I believe, is acceptance. I become, I'm not a no vote at that point.
Yeah, you are.
You are.
That's, Peters had to do it when Peter was involved with projects.
It's not a no.
It's just a sitting back.
Yeah, but it counts.
It's not an acceptance. Couldn't be a tiebreaker.
It counts as a yes, as much as it counts as a no. It's in Robert's rules.
Oh, cool.
Okay.
That's a good one for town council. You know, Kathy.
Just ask the question that if a recusal harms that majority.
But that's, the point of it is they're entitled to five members. That's, they are entitled to it.
Yeah, but that's as good as a yes.
So if the majority goes to a yes?
So they decide that the fifth person is a yes? Is that right? Like if, if our fifth person has to recuse himself, that's a yes. And if the other four say yes, then it's unanimous.
Unanimous.
Is that right?
But what if someone says no?
Then, then they wouldn't...
It's still a four-person majority.
We've, we've already finished.
A three-person majority.
We've already finished that industrial park. There's only one, there's only one license to go there, which is the operating one.
Well, you're assuming somebody's not going to sell out what they have and change over, you know?
Yeah, that's true, too.
I mean, that's already happened. It just hasn't happened yet, you know?
I thought we were getting three over there.
One, two, three, four, five, six. We had six in the industrial park. Two more over... So we already had nine.
We need a list. I didn't realize that was, I thought we were doing three. That's what was communicated. We were in a public hearing, we were in...
I was against it.
We were in the library.
Probably arguing a moot point anyway, if it's going to go to ZBA.
Well...
Anyway, I just think we...
We're not arguing a moot point because this is going in front of town meeting.
Right.
Okay? So at town meeting, we stand up and, and if I say what I just said, you know, see, the voice of the planning board carries. A lot of people listen to the voice of the planning board, believe it or not. Never used to be this way. People used to stand up and tell us that we were in cahoots with the, with the selectmen. Nowadays...
Well, that was last week.
What? No, 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 this was 20 years ago, 15 years ago. They used to say, they used to get up and, and make, point at us and tell us that, you know, you guys are in cahoots with the selectmen.
Yeah.
You know?
We got yelled at last week, didn't we?
When?
Well, the guy who said that, we were all on the take.
The 51 people that sat here that...
Yeah, from the road, that's all broken up.
Didn't I yell back?
Yeah, you did.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did, but it was a, Barbara, it was an unpleasant meeting.
I was not there, I was on vacation. I'm so sorry.
I was angry.
They were...
What, what property was it?
No, it was just, it was a leak. I mean, it was water.
Oh, I remember talking about that, yeah.
Yeah, it was on...
Allison Shore?
That's a privately owned road, right?
It's a private, it's a private road off a private road that's been in litigation for a while.
Yeah. We went to court over it and lost.
The town did?
Yes.
Why?
Not over Fuller Shores, over a private road. And I was trying to tell them that we do not have, we do not have the ability to go in there and tell a developer what they can and can't do on a private road.
Right. And that's why we don't like them.
That's right. That's why we don't like them, Zach.
Yeah, no, it's, it was, it was a mess.
Yeah, and they just didn't like that answer.
Okay.
I got a little upset. Were you here? Come on here.
I wasn't.
You're feeling better, though, huh?
Yeah.
Glad to hear it.
So I'd like to brush this aside for the time being because we're probably going to have some discussion at town meeting on that.
So do you want to schedule that hearing with the other ones?
Which ones?
What do you mean with the other ones? I thought this was one of the ones.
Which ones?
With the other zoning amendments?
This is being added to the other zoning amendments.
What zoning amendments?
The ones that we discussed last week, the very small...
This should be in place of the first, whatever the first one was. What, what other ones did we discuss?
Oh, the, the small items like, you know, like when you need a, when you need a license for a storage, for a storage trailer, this just changes to the, to the, to the zoning rules as far as who can, you know, we're, we're going to, you remember any of this?
Yes, can we throw them in? That's a nothing discussion.
Well, it may be nothing discussion, but it is, you, you asked what other zoning changes and those are them, you know?
Yeah, okay.
This is, this will be number three. We only had two and this will be three.
Wasn't there one that, about how many square feet on a residential?
Moving up to 30...
Moving it up to what?
34,000.
Right now...
Yeah, this a week.
Right now, we don't do residential site plan review.
I have a change right here.
If we change it, because it's completely unrealistic, what's written down, so we couldn't possibly do it. Now, if we change it to something realistic, we have to admit that this is something that we could do and that we're going to have to start doing, so I think we should...
The proposed change, the proposed change would be applicants applying for building permit will, who will be disturbing more than existing is 3,000 square feet. That number will change to 43,560 square feet as determined by the builder and the building superintendent. It's, it's, as Nate described it last night, now he has an online building application, so people go online to file their building permits.
Yeah.
And there's a checkbox there, will you be, will you be disturbing more or less? And, and if it's yes or no, and even the no's, he's going to double check. And if it's blatantly over, he's going to call him on it.
It's an acre and that means we'll do over an acre.
Right.
Okay.
And, and this, this helps him because everything's more than 3,000, but it's, everything slipped through the cracks. So this kind of gets it up into reality and it's on the, it's, it's, it's a number that people can work with, like, oh, well, this lot's already clear, it's, it's, you know what I mean? I'm not going to disturb more than an acre when I build my house in the, in the front 120 feet, you know?
I'm going to say start regrading it.
True. Yeah, this is all based on...
Maybe they'll lay some trees up.
But there is a, there is a box on his online building permit form that's either added it or it's been there from the very beginning as to disturbance. And that triggers the whole process.
I like that. I mean, I'm just saying, I'm sorry.
You don't like what part of it? I'm just curious.
I just think we cut down an awful lot of trees and we lay down an awful lot of loam for grass and we end up putting in chemicals into the ground, we provide water to surrounding areas. I mean, I look at my development and I say, this is ridic, my yard is ridiculous.
Well, that's Johnson Road.
It is.
Yeah, well, that was like that.
Well, I know, because it was a gravel pit.
Yeah.
But anybody else could come along and just say it's easier, because it is easier for a developer. And frankly, it's more aesthetically pleasing to get rid of some of these scrub pines and put in, you know, landscaping.
It's very hard to build a home without disturbing, you know, without disturbing close to that amount.
Yeah.
It's hard, you know? You have to have, so this may be a lot of, of site plan reviews. Do you know what I mean? Once it becomes the way.
Well, we won't enter tomorrow one anymore.
They'll have plenty of free time.
Use some of that time.
I'm glad you're taking it the way you are, zinc. That's a relief. I was, I was nervous you were going to get upset.
I, I, I thought it was a good...
I'm relieved personally.
I thought it was a good idea to slow them down and, and to make them explain, especially at the beginning, but...
You know something? We should be taking our cue from some of the other communities that are very affluent and all the things that they're doing are, are different. And the communities that welcome and speed this stuff up, they get one. I was driving through Randolph the other day and I said, thank God we don't have the leadership that's caused what's happened in there. Because you drive through the development, you've got a commercial and industrial and a house and industrial and a commercial and then a retail, it's ridiculous. It's terrible planning. It's just terrible. It's bad for everybody. It's bad for the property values, it's bad for the aesthetic.
What about your end of?
Why did you look over there?
No, 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 no.
Your father was the...
Yeah. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, my uncle, my uncle was the chairman of the planning board, my, my grandfather was the chairman of the zoning board of appeals.
Of all the towns you picked.
Sorry, I was telling you that's what happened.
I swear to God. Small world.
Before you went too far, I just wanted to...
Which, which area?
I don't know, I was taking the back roads over to Braintree Rehab.
Yeah. There are a lot of broken up stuff.
It is.
But there used to be neighborhood stores. You could go down, I mean, I could walk to a store from my house and.
What, they knock them down and put up houses?
What, some of the stores, yeah.
And then they had industrial, they had these industrial buildings.
Oh, I know.
Old, like the sixties.
Lot of those, yeah.
It just looks weird.
Yeah, it is weird.
Looks better here, but we've taken, it's been planned a little bit better.
I think so, too.
So, can I have a motion to put that over with the other amendments?
Motion to add the marijuana, you know, to.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 What is the criteria for a butter? Is it fifteen hundred feet or the five hundred feet?
Five hundred.
So, I think that.
I think to say that you're out of all of them, it would be incorrect, right? There'll be two that you'll be, you'll, you would be in a butter two, is that right? Two that are going right now?
Nature's remedy one, I am in a butter.
Yep.
I don't know that there's another one.
Cross, not cross, Trichrome, what's the name?
Yeah.
Trichome?
I think he's more than five hundred away.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause I've got, Toddren is next to me, he has to have two hundred and something feet of frontage.
Yep.
And then there's that whole section of, like the swamp edge, there's a long span before you get to the old Tracy and Ford's building.
Right.
So, he's well away. Vital Med up the other end, that's gonna be one, that's quarter mile or more away.
We're done with him.
I'm just saying, talking about, it'd only be the one that would be in a butter to me. Not that I think we still pass it off, but I just think we should keep the site plan review. Anyway, next time, I don't.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, did I say all in favor?
Yes, I think you did.
For adding it to discussion.
Yes.
And it'll be posted as the third item for that hearing, correct? Yeah. And what day is it? I'm sorry.
It was, it was May eleventh?
May eleventh.
May ninth, today's.
May ninth. Just out of curiosity, there was a change to the language, to change it to saying marijuana uses, was there any discussion about why they wanted that word changed?
I don't know exactly, I know Rita had said that a lot of the, just what the state has changed some of the language.
May ninth.
They're doing that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I don't know if that was.
I'm just curious.
I can find that out for you.
That's true.
Okay, so, we need to appoint a new commission member for, or board member for Surford Commissioner.
I nominate that Barbara continue as our member for Surford.
Did you like doing it?
I do.
Do like doing it?
I'd love to.
Okay.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Thank you.
What's that?
I know, I'm a nerd, I like it.
No, I mean.
They have cookies.
It is the cookies, it's all about the cookies.
Okay.
They have cookies.
Yay for cookies. Okay, so approving the meeting minutes for December thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
I read them online, and a motion to approve the meeting minutes from December thirteenth.
I read them as well, and I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I believe I will abstain.
That's okay. Did you object to?
I do not object, and I just was not present, so I don't feel comfortable voting.
That's fine. Okay, do we have an update on the notice of intent to lay out Sotucket Trail? Yeah, I guess we get a letter from Nick Laney. In here somewhere.
Nope, it's from Ryan Trahan.
That name's familiar.
Oh.
It's a big family.
Who? Is it Trahan? It's a big family?
There's the letter, basically, Nick Laney wouldn't or can't perform this operation on the street, is that right?
Yeah, he doesn't do that.
Oh, okay. You want mine?
Um, yeah, I don't know where mine went.
It was on the top when we first got here.
Yeah, I know. Tossing stuff around, now I can't find it. Can I just finish quickly?
Yep.
Right, forgive me, I don't know this, I'm not familiar with this particular location, but it does say here that the catch basins should be cleaned prior to acceptance.
Yeah.
Well, does that mean that that is gonna become town property?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the intent of this property, is to become a town road.
So, once it becomes a town road, then that catch basin, does that happen for every town road, when there's a catch basin in the development? The catch basins become the responsibility of the town?
Yes.
Drain cleaning is pretty standard.
Mm-hmm. That's standard. Because we don't have homeowners associations on every road, nor do we want that. And the town used to take full responsibility and used to take ownership of the roads. They don't do that anymore, because they don't want the liability. That was recent.
But the net effect still is that the town.
Because once a developer is no longer, once the town accepts the road, the town plows the road, after a certain amount of time, the developer is no longer around.
So, in the case of the parcel we looked at today, they said that that catch basin would be cleaned by the homeowners association for that development. So, we do have some cases where there's an HOA where they're responsible, the community's responsible for cleaning them. But when we had the parcel over the industrial park, that was a bone of contention, because it hadn't been cleaned for so long, and there was quite a bit of sediment in the bottom, right? I know I talk about this all the time, but we really have to think about having floods, having a lot of water move through this town.
That is the industrial park over.
The forty R.
That Bob.
With the forty R was, right.
John's is, yeah.
Right.
And if I remember correctly, he sort of took the initiative and accepted the cost of getting those cleaned, rather than, rather than coming at the town and, because in all honesty.
Because that's the way it was gonna turn out in the end.
Exactly. If he wanted to keep moving, the process to move along, he did the, he did the best thing for himself and got them cleaned up, and he could've petitioned the town.
But in ten years, it's still our, it's still up to us.
I think those are condos, no?
That parcel is, but that's the question, I guess, I'm asking.
Those condos, those are gonna be condos, so that way they're gonna still.
Be responsible for cleaning that parcel.
Right, but that drainage is from the whole property.
Right, which was an issue.
Yes, but, but still, I think the reason why that was the way it was, was because the town was negligent on cleaning up.
Right, which is probably why this whole issue got on my radar to begin with.
Right.
Because I started worrying about.
Because the town is, town is more than happy to take taxes from the FBI and from all the other buildings up the street, but then they just a little wary about cleaning up the drainage, because that costs money, right? You know what I mean? So.
And you'd have to be maintained, it's not just that, you know, you could end up with plants growing in these things and so forth.
Well, there is.
I've driven by neighborhoods where, right, and then I worry about little kids going in there, and it's a drowning liability, and then it's the town's responsibility that's not being cleaned out, because it's not draining properly.
And the drainage retention areas.
Retention areas, exactly.
Right, the ponds.
Yes.
So, this one we actually have to act on, don't we?
What, this one from Ryan Trahan?
Well, act as in like, I think they, what we have to do is wait for, I assume the, Mr.
It's almost like a motion subject to.
Right.
Right.
Complete the checklist.
Yes.
Complete the checklist, come back to us.
Yeah.
Subject to all these things being taken care of.
He's trying to get this load, this road laid out for this town meeting, so he has to kinda get this stuff done.
He's gonna get it in order.
Fairly quickly, it's April, so.
Yeah.
But they just got it, so he hasn't even seen it yet.
Right.
The letter.
Right, can we make sure he gets the letter tomorrow morning? Because with town's meetings, what, June, June tenth?
Do we have an email for him?
I do, yes.
Could you flip him an email then?
June third, I think.
June third?
Thought I saw that.
Nothing in here really seems like it was like.
So, I think you have to respond to the board of selectmen.
Yes, we do.
At the meeting, so it was suggested just to make the motion if you wanna accept it, but contingent upon all that being done.
I think that's.
That's a good motion.
Makes sense.
Well.
Who's gonna make it?
Contingent on all this getting done, and then the engineer inspecting it.
Right.
Correct, and re-inspect, yeah.
Do we need a motion for that, Brian?
So.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mark.
Make a motion to accept Sotucket Trail as a town road pending the completion of the checklist put forward by Ryan Trahan, and that checklist being inspected by the highway department for approval.
And Ryan Trahan.
And Ryan Trahan.
Yes.
To meet all points in his letter.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have to report within forty-five days from our referral, and the referral came sometime within the last, sometime within the last month, right?
Which referral?
There's just, there's a procedure that, it's a pretty difficult procedure that we go through for the road, having little to do with the conditions or anything like that, it's just a matter of, of just, you know, doing needs and bounds descriptions, you know, stuff like that, because it involves taking of land, even though they don't exactly take it, they sort of take the land, and it, it's a process that's going on at the registry of, you know, taking the land, this land used to be some farmer's land, and now it's gonna become the land of the town of Lakeville, the land that's underneath the road, and there's a process that they make you go through, and we have to report that we're, that we agree, that this was a subdivision road, and that we agree with it becoming a town road, subject to, but we have to agree.
Do we need to amend the motion, though?
Pardon?
Do we need to amend the motion?
Yeah.
Would that be the appropriate course?
Yeah, yeah, we just have to, we have to agree that it's, that the town should accept this road, this subdivision road as a town road.
So.
And we refer to it as it's part of plan, blank, like, like, done by grown barber and, you know, all that stuff, but it's just like an official notice.
Okay.
I can show you the.
So, are you saying that we need to actually make a document to pass along for town meeting?
Yeah, no, no, this is, this is just for the selectmen right now, then that'll go to, the selectmen will do another one like it. It turns out that there's like, there's a stack of papers that they, that they build up with this, with these road acceptances, and then there's finally one they give it back to Brian to read in front of town meeting, and you accept it, but this starts out, this is a second document of a stack, and we agree with it, and I can, I can work, I can work with you on it.
Essentially, what you're saying, though, is we just have to amend Mark's motion.
Yes, yes.
To state that the planning board will acknowledge acceptance of that road as part of a, becoming a public road, subject to.
Yes, subject, yes.
Okay.
There's part of a subdivision of land that we voted on, truly voted on.
Yeah, all that stuff.
Yada, yada, yada.
Yeah.
Yada, yada, yada.
It's important that we do that, we go through that.
Kathy, did you get my entire motion?
Okay, so, may, I make a request that Mark start over from the beginning, so that she has clarification on that, because the yada, yada, yada.
And I'll just add her in. So, I'm gonna retract my original motion.
Yeah, we're only on the first page right now.
Yeah.
But we're, we're on that first. I'm, I'm still getting through my mind what Derek came for.
You wanna do?
The future.
You wanna give Mark a chance to, are you writing it?
I just jotted some notes down just so I could, what he's gonna hear, so I have it proper.
Derek was here to oppose that.
Yeah, yeah.
He sold him that property as two lots.
Yeah. And Derek was here to oppose it. I was completely surprised.
But then the guy, the guy took the two lots and he expanded on it, now he wants to put in, what, ten or eleven?
Twelve.
Twelve.
Well, but forty B, I mean, that's the only way you can get that small a lot.
Right.
In this town, but that's just, it's just odd that.
No, the.
I mean, he hadn't mentioned that before, had he? You've been dealing with Derek, this came from, this came from left field.
No, no, it didn't, it didn't sound that way to me. It sounds like he's trying to protect what he has remaining.
His future plans.
What?
His future plans.
I know what, what one of the next, what two of the next phases are.
Well, that's, you're in, you're in the secret circle, you know the secret inching.
Yep.
Cool.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, no, it's just because, just from hearing, you know.
Wanna go for it?
I'm gonna go for it.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to accept Sotucket Trail with a positive recommendation for the board of selectmen to approve this road pending completion of Ryan Trahan's recommended remedies and final inspection by the highway superintendent and Ryan Trahan at the completion of these remedies.
And submittal of the as-built.
Yeah.
Which are, they're, they're in the.
They're in?
He has all the as-built.
In the letter.
Information in here.
Sweet.
Including as-bills.
Great.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nice, you've done this before.
Conservation.
I won't hold that against you. Okay, so, sign a bill establish to, a procedure to sign bills, is that what you need?
Yes.
Okay, do we have to?
We used to do these all the time.
Lay that out, what?
It seems like we hadn't signed a bill in a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pauline just used to.
Oh, really? Oh, there's.
Pauline just used to pass them around.
Yep.
Well, I like the way that you're providing this, where it was originally appropriated, what's actually been incurred year to date, and then percentage used, I like seeing it that way. Maybe this is, these line items aren't sufficient, I don't know, but.
Is that for?
Yeah, what do you wanna do?
Just, I know on the zoning board, like, just the chairman signs it, then I've been told that if you wanna give me the authority, I can just sign it, it's what you wanna do with bills.
Is that bill, okay.
This is for advertising, this was for the Nature's Remedy, which I actually have the check from them, so it's kinda, kinda odd that, like, the town has to pay it and then they pay the town.
Yes, that's the way it works, yeah. Might be odd, but that's the way it's done, you know?
So, just how you're going forward, how you wanna handle that, those.
Can I make a recommendation?
Yes, you may.
As long as the bill that's being incurred is awash to the town, then she can certainly sign off on that and process it, because it's a net.
Yes.
Okay, and I would also say that any expense up to maybe fifty dollars, we don't have expenses, right?
Right, but on occasion.
But anything more than that, we should.
On occasion, we have like, you know, like, we don't know what we're incurring with town council, and I don't want Kathy.
Yes.
Out on a limb like that, so.
Right, but that would be more than fifty bucks, right?
Yes, it would.
Mark, what are you thinking?
In conservation, again, no.
No, that's fine, no, no, no.
Whenever we had like a, maybe a Staples bill or something, we just passed it around, four signatures, to acknowledge that we needed to buy something, and we just all kinda signed on the invoice, to acknowledge that it could be paid.
Mm-hmm.
It's just kinda simple as formality, just pass it around at the end, so we would've just passed it, everybody just put the John Hancock and passed it back.
Right.
It's our acknowledgement that, go ahead.
Typically, we used to do that, we used to do that with like, I mean, Paulie used to just pass around, even her, her bill.
Right, well, that was the thing, we always had to sign her bill.
Because she wasn't at pool then, right. So, we used to have to sign her, you know, for her doing her work for us. But, yeah.
So, is a motion made?
Yeah, I don't mind, really.
It doesn't matter to me, I'm just throwing out options.
I think it'd be a great time saver thing.
I'll second it.
So, we made a motion that any bill that has a wash is gonna be processed by Kathy.
Or under fifty bucks.
Or under fifty bucks. And any expense over that cost will require approval by the planning board?
Sure.
Is that what you want?
Because we don't go to Staples. We know, we don't even buy stuff, you know?
And we'll just sign it.
Hundred and fifty dollars a year we get.
That's tough.
I haven't, so far, I haven't gotten a coffee out of this outfit.
No.
Anyway.
You've gone and bought your coffee in expensive.
Zink, go get the snack cart.
Yeah.
Processing the check costs more than the coffee.
Cookies. Is those cookies you?
Although Lorraine did use to bring candy, not saying anything, Kathy, as derogatory, but you know.
I think we go through about two thousand dollars paper.
Rising plans, right?
What I'm thinking about is this fifty-five, there's something about this fifty-five requirement that's important, more important than what we, what we heard. I just heard some, some rumor that it just, but it seems to be a, it seems to be something they can get out of real easy, easily. It's like it's not very strictly written. But it just, you just have to, we just have to, just have to read the, read the zoning and see what they're talking about with the fifty-five plus.
Well, the issue too is going to be is that the State House is so, so in favor of higher density and more affordable developments that, you know, they just approve it all, seems like. You know what I mean? You'd have to have a good reason not to. It's only three units.
Are we okay to be discussing that and then we kind of move on from that?
Well, Brian's.
No, we're not. We still have the camera. That's why.
Pretty common.
That's why I just picked one narrow topic.
Watch it on TV, it's like constant.
You go back and watch our meetings?
No.
As soon as you shut the camera off.
Actually, I do, it's fascinating.
I start going around the table.
You don't.
Good team, good, good sleep.
Well, I think we're, ultimately, we left out that we find out from town council what the ramifications are of if it can be, or if we need to go to the town meeting.
Well, she won't know. You have to actually ask her a question. You can't.
I did. I wrote down three questions. I gave them to Kathy. Could you read them, understand them? Okay. And, you know, we'll see what they come back with.
Yes.
But doesn't the board have the right just to say no based on the density that the town has?
It's a forty B.
Already?
No.
We have not met our ten percent requirement.
But we're over.
And only gaining three more doesn't really help much.
Doesn't do anything for us.
We're over a minimum, though.
No, we're not. That's the problem. And you know why we're over the, not over the minimum? Is because they unwrapped LeBaron Hills.
What do you mean unwrapped it?
Do you remember when LeBaron Hills was first approved? It was an over fifty-five affordable development. That entire project was supposed to be affordable. And when we did that and we did the train station, we were supposed to be set to build out, or very close to it. That was my understanding, but that was twenty years ago.
Yeah.
And then it got changed.
LeBaron meets the minimum requirements, though.
No, it does.
No.
No, LeBaron, the second half of it is now retail. It's not affordable anymore.
What's that?
The new section of it. We're talking about LeBaron.
Wait, we should.
We should adjourn first, yeah.
But I don't know if we're done.
Nope, not done.
No, we're not done.
Is there?
Next meeting, I agree with that.
Just for the budget, like, I don't know if you've seen this lately. I was wondering if you want a more, like, realistic budget, you know, now that.
Why, what is it?
We did this every year before.
Is it worth it, put in the, what, sixty thousand dollars?
I was just thinking, I want to add, like, an advertising item. They've been paying it out of the selectmen's budget, which really isn't.
No, it shouldn't be going anywhere.
Advertising? For?
Like for zoning amendments, our public hearings.
For the planning one?
Those, those ones we do incur and you can't pass it along to anybody, a zoning change is just, the town pays for it, you know? But I, I mean, is, do you need it, like, categorized over to us? Because it never has been. I don't, I don't really care.
Well, I spoke to the accountant and he said typically it would be within your budget because it's your funds that you're using.
Every cost should be allocated to a cost center. And so even these, even these should be allocated out.
How do you know you're going to put enough in there? My only concern is, like, right now with, with almost, with basically zero in our budget, everything's borrowed from the selectmen's budget to pay for everything.
Right.
And if you were to say, hey, let's put two thousand in there, but in between this, between the June thing and, and the November election, we blow right past it in, in hearing, you know what I mean?
Right.
And then you're like, whoa, what now? Oh, go back to the selectmen and grab another four hundred dollars. You know what I mean? Is that what you would do? I don't know.
So I work for the finance committee in the Krishna. I don't know what your procedure is. I know in the Krishna, if you deplete the budget, you have the ability to move it from another line item or you have the ability to go to the finance committee for a transfer. I mean, for, yeah, for a reserve fund transfer. I don't know how this town does it, so.
Yeah, that's, I was just talking about that sometime earlier.
I would love to know legal fees that each board, right? So what are we incurring for this?
And see.
Because I think that, right.
And see what they charge, how much they charge against us. Especially the.
It's been a busy year.
Yeah.
Do you have to know tonight about the changing of the budget?
No.
I, I'm kind of in favor of keeping it at zero or next to zero. I know that we've thrown numbers out before, like seventy-seven thousand five hundred, which would be a planner, and then the five hundred dollars of staples that we use, you know? But if that's just like goes, falls on deaf ears, I guess, every year, so.
Any group that I've been involved with has been, has been in favor of us having a planner.
I'm in full favor of it, yeah.
But it's never.
No.
It just never happens.
We, we used to put in for a legitimate budget every year. And every year, they used to give us a hundred and fifty bucks. They used to slash our budget. And it gets to be funny.
We have the original bill.
What's that? We used to put in, you know.
Sorry?
And we used to have, you know, itemize what we wanted and they would just.
It, it just got paid somehow, right?
No, they just, a hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
No, we got nothing.
What did you need, though?
We put in for a planner.
Oh, yes, yes.
One of my packet didn't count?
Nope. We're coming, we're coming back around.
What is it?
Do you want to hand it back to Mark for this packet?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I don't know why I had it, or nobody else did.
Wasn't that your packet?
No, we all had it. We just wish on the agenda. That was the original.
Zink said he didn't have one, so I used five.
I didn't have one.
Oh, because you had already signed it, like, maybe, I don't know.
But don't, don't you have to sign them on the same one?
Yeah, she's had it going.
Ah, I see.
So she has an original. She has the original you and I signed. And now we're signing.
We're getting tired now.
Yeah.
I'm good then, right?
Email in there as that.
I don't know.
Yes.
So a motion to continue the question about the budget for, for the next meeting, perhaps? We can think about it.
Second. Was that the motion or?
Yeah. It was, it was, it was a motion to continue the debate about our budget and whether we want to keep it where it's at or add to it.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Budget, signatures, town clerk acknowledgements. Oh, she acknowledged something?
I'm sure everyone should have those. Just, you can give me back the copy that you received it. And I think, and maybe, whether you have to do the training, you only have to do the training every two years. So.
Oh, yes.
So there should be a note on yours that you have to do the training.
Which training is that?
I got the note.
I don't think I have one.
I don't have one.
You don't?
Sweet.
It's in there with a paper clip on it somewhere.
Yeah, it's in there.
Looks like you got it.
Mine.
Minus the post-it.
Which training?
I want to thank you, went into the clerk, so she already.
Yeah, I think I did it.
Yeah.
She had it when I got some money.
It's in there. It's acknowledgement of, that you did your conflict of interest online thing.
I don't think I ever did mine the last time.
I do.
Oh, there we go. Okay.
That is wicked fun. Well, I always learn something.
I'm going to have that, it looks fine.
Want to do mine for me, you think?
I don't, I don't.
I know.
Eh, you failed.
What?
Nothing, I'll do this.
Who's talking about cheating?
Oh, you have somebody takes for you?
I was going to have Zink to do it, he loves that stuff. I'll do it.
Okay. So you're going to sign the front page, Zink?
The. I thought there were two different, there's two different programs that you take.
I think there's ethics and conflict of interest, right?
No, there's employees is one and, you know, volunteer, you know, boards, committees and stuff like that is another one, I thought. I could be wrong. Anyways.
You're right.
Yeah, it says it right here. You're right, Zink. Employees and parentheses must be provided.
This, this says employees.
Can I, can I circle, may I?
Yep.
Can I?
Sure.
There's one. I don't give you mine right now, right?
You can give me just the acknowledgement.
Oh, okay.
And then.
I'll get, yeah.
And you get that done. Because I think you have to get the certificate to support.
Conflict.
And it gives me the eye every time I go by now.
Two favorite things.
That's it, really?
What?
Those are the favorites?
Conflict of interest. I mostly, I mostly enjoyed conflict.
I love it that we planned ahead the year, it helps so much, the calendar.
Yeah.
So how long does it take to do this conflict of interest thing?
An hour or two.
Hour or two? Really?
Yeah.
Last time I did it, it just like dragged on and on and on. And I was over an hour at the computer and finally I shut the thing off and I just walked away.
So I had written down the public hearing was for May eleventh, but the meeting's on the ninth? Does that sound right? The public hearing would be on the same night as our?
Public hearing's on the ninth, I think.
The ninth?
Yep.
I think that was a mistake.
It was probably my mistake, I just wanted to be sure I had that right, public hearing. I hate it when I forget that and you show up and you're like, eek.
Thursday, May ninth.
Okay, so I would.
Wait, he's going to ask. You.
Yeah.
What? Moving to adjourn?
No.
No?
No, I have to tell you what happened at Serpide last week.
Oh, oh, wow.
You know, there's very important stuff going on in the world.
Okay.
It's on the agenda.
Okay, that's not on the agenda.
It's my new business.
It wasn't on the agenda.
Well, fine, we'll put it on the agenda for next time.
No, no, go ahead.
But then I'll tell you what my new business is, because I should.
No, no, go ahead.
So the new business thing is, I think we had talked about before, especially when the Dollar Tree thing came before us, about getting together some architectural standards for revision to the bylaw. I did speak with Lorraine about it and she said the proper protocol would be for me to give you some proposals and then for us all to discuss it and then we could then get it on for the town meeting as an amendment to the bylaw. I wouldn't need to have a petition for it. I just, before I spend more time, are you guys in agreement that we need something like that? Do you understand what I'm asking?
I fully agree.
Okay.
You, right now, a company could come in and whatever you ask for, they could say no. And, and if they're not asking for anything in return, let's say like a density bonus or anything, they just basically can snub their nose at any request and they can give you a cinder block square. So I'm in favor of it completely, you know? Within reason, you know? Obviously, you know, you, you got to keep it in perspective to our town. Yeah, no, no, no columns or lines, you know?
Well, the thinking is, is that when you drive into Lakeville on one oh five, the last major parcels of land to be developed will be right there at the entrance. So I think of it the gateway coming into our town and I don't want it to look like garbage. I think it should look really more consistent and with, with what we're looking for. So next meeting, I will spend some time investigating, if you guys want to spend some time investigating, I will.
This would be something for the fall, right?
It would be, I don't know. I just know that I want to get that ball rolling because it makes me anxious. And I know that as that Dollar Tree goes up, I'm going to be more anxious and more anxious about it.
Cringing?
Yes. It's just not, but I think the town surveys.
There's a lot of people complaining about that, you see it.
Yeah. When you look at the town surveys and what we want, it's not consistent.
Right.
So we have to, you know, we didn't do anything prior, but we need to be proactive and do it in the future, so.
Okay, so maybe for the next meeting?
Yep.
And I thought maybe I'd just go to, you know, maybe five towns and see what was good or bad, if anybody has any thoughts, if you want to email or whatever. The other thing I wanted to tell you about was some really interesting stuff happened at this last Serpide meeting. Well, we're not going to talk about that, we'll talk about that next meeting? Want to do it now?
Right, now's fine. Go ahead and talk about it.
So the, there was a presentation given about something called dynamic open access. And what it is, is there are companies out there that are looking to build internet service for municipalities, providing them to the residents of the community with the benefit going to the municipalities. So essentially, it would offset the community's cost of high-speed internet and so forth by providing that service also to the residents. So the example they gave in one community, the people were able to get high-speed internet fiber optic wire to their home for twenty-five dollars a month. And that's staggering. I mean, that's a staggering savings. And that, the resiliency from that savings, I think, is very meaningful for families. And I also think secondary resiliency has to do with Homeland Security because they said if there was a terrorist attack, that we would be, a municipal service would have a, a secondary, a secondary level for internet service. So we would still be able to communicate within our towns or anybody that was on our secondary network as opposed to being just plugged into the worldwide web. So Rita has already taken advantage of this. The town has already done some of this, has had it in place in conjunction with TMLP. It is kind of something that's going to be coming up. Serpide is talking about having it be done regionally so that would be, our rural communities here in the region may consider doing something together as a cost savings and benefit. So I'll just keep you posted, but I think it's a very interesting, forward-moving thing and could happen more quickly than people realize. and could happen more quickly than people realize. Second thing I want to bring up was Brayton Point. That's over those of the coal-burning plant over on the way to the airport there down in Providence. You know, we're talking in Fall River.
April 26th?
Twenty-seven.
Somerset?
Somerset.
Yeah.
Twenty-seven.
Blowing it up.
I'm going to a party to watch it go down.
You are?
Across the river, Coles River on the other side, yeah. This guy I know is having a party to watch this.
Can you get an invite?
You don't think they are?
Oh, I can imagine.
May 27th?
It said seven seconds.
April 27th.
April 27th.
Because they're cooling, they just have water.
It's early in the morning.
Oh.
They didn't give us the time, maybe they didn't, I just didn't know.
I know how it works for the company that does that.
Oh, yeah? That's really cool.
You know, for Keywood.
Take a ride down to, like, the Coles.
Keywood job.
Watching it across the way.
I think it's great to, you know, build a couple like that and then knock them down.
But the development will be state-owned. It's going to be very interesting.
No, no, I love that kind of forum, that's just gorgeous, you know?
Is that blowing it up?
No, no, building them, building them. But you don't need them anymore, so you got to blow them up.
Well, you can use them, right?
So we had two other changes I want to mention to you. The Federal Communications Commission is changing, and I don't understand this law very well, but what allows us to be recorded for the community, those are paid for by fees from Comcast and whoever's providing services. I believe that the law's just changed at the federal level and the concessions that the town gives them will now count towards the money. So we're not going to be getting, these operations will not have the same resources anymore and we may be losing those opportunities. So some of the politicians here in Massachusetts are making some noise about this because it would be very detrimental to public access television, which is kind of a playing field. And it may be worthwhile to just, I just want to let you guys know that that's going on and is something that they were talking about at Serpide.
Because Comcast is...
Well, no, the federal government changed the rules.
They're no longer going to fund it.
Right, well, they used, they used to have to pay us and they also got, we also gave them, they gave us concessions. Now, the concessions count move the payment, so it's basically taking away the payment that we would be getting from there. So that's going to be a pretty big deal for some communities.
For the public access.
For the public access.
So they're not paying us for it anymore?
They're not going to give, the towns won't have the money to run those programs anymore. So I think that's a disadvantage, especially for a community like ours because a lot of people do watch us on television, you know, while we're government. The last thing I wanted to mention is apparently we can expect to have a major change in the cost of trash removals specific to recycling. Recycling has gone up, I think they said over a hundred dollars a ton. China's no longer accepting many of our recyclables and they're going to be, this is going to become a very hot issue very, very quickly. So we talked about it a couple months ago and it keeps circling around, but now the money's going to be quite meaningful. That's it. I did my reporting.
All right, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.